We'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Boneyer.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Layman.
Here.
Mennel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
If you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public hearing, no special reports, presentations, so we would go to public comments. And if you go up to the microphone, and we'll give you five minutes to speak on whatever topic you would like to talk about. And we'd appreciate it if you kind of give us new information. So this is the time for anybody in the public that wants to talk, you do not have to. You're welcome to the meeting. We just don't usually have this many people here. So is there anybody that'd like to make a comment? If you speak up to the microphone and just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Steve Shaw. I live at 366 Fernwood. I understand there's going to be a discussion night on building walking trails and bike paths. I live on Fernwood, the 300 block, which is one of the mains, it's a pretty good street because it goes, it feeds into Illinois, it goes from Main Street all the way to the high school. We get a lot of traffic on that. The 300 block has no sidewalk on either side of the street. And we have a lot of, it's, the houses there have single car garages. So most people park their extra car on the street. So people walking have to walk in the street, and then when it's the car is parked out there, they have to park, walk even farther into the street. Excuse me. When they rebuilt the street in the 200 block several years ago, trustee Leach was on the trustee then, the mayor was on there as a trustee. There was a big discussion on whether to reconstruct sidewalks on both sides of the street or one side, or how they were going to do it. And the decision was made to make sidewalks on both sides. I think Mr. Trustee Leach led that discussion after a lot of comment. I don't, I don't, uh, I'm not adverse to having these walking trails and the bike trails. But I think we should fix some of the sidewalks, or even provide sidewalks in the city itself, before we bake some out. Excuse me. Very nervous in this mass as big as it can be to talk.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
I just think we should have sidewalks in the city, in the town, in the village, before we start building out. So that is, that is my thought, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else would like to address the board? You're right.
I'm Kevin Miller. I live at 334 Wolf Crossing Drive. I've been a resident of Morton for 27 years. First 17 years, I was in Jeff Kaufman's backyard. Our properties were contiguous, I think. And back then, I was a runner. I ran an average, or at least a goal of 1,000 miles a year. It'd be like putting on your shoes and running from here to Austin, Texas before December 31st. So I was an experienced runner. Then 10 years ago, my wife and I moved out to Wolf Crossing Drive. And there, I remember the very first morning, waking up, I was so excited. Put my New Balance tennis shoes on, or running shoes rather, went out for a run. I was going to enjoy the deer and the, the trees and the wonderful ambiance out there, and went down Wolf Crossing to Main Street and turned on Main. And I realized halfway through my race, I will never do this again. The lack of sidewalks, the lack of a trail, the lack of any shoulder on the road along Main Street through those parks, was too much even for a very experienced runner like myself. Those parks are beautiful. I don't know if you've been there in the last two or three days. I'd encourage every one of you to look at, it's just jaw-droppingly gorgeous. If you get past the broken limbs and everything, but the ice and the snow on the trees, it's fantastic. And living out there, I'm amazed at how often those parks are used. Those dog parks, there are always people there, no matter what the weather is. The pavilions you've got there for family reunions and birthdays and class reunions and parties and get-togethers, again, heavily used. You've got the disc golf, you've got the trails. Yesterday, there was standing room only in the parking lot for everybody to get their sleds out and get into that parking lot so the kids could go sledding. These parks are used a lot. But there are two things about those parks that I really want to bring home to all of you here. Number one is accessibility, and number two is safety. Accessibility, these I think are the only parks in this area, at least in Morton, where you cannot use it unless you already have a motorized vehicle. Kind of the antithesis of a park, isn't it? And second, safety, I've tried to bike from Wolf Crossing into Morton, well, we are in Morton, but into the rest of the, into the village. You just can't do it. There is no, there is no shoulder on that road, and you most certainly, even an experienced runner like myself, you can't run into town, you can't run along those roads. These gorgeous parks, we can't use them because we can't get to them, either from Wolf Crossing or from the rest of the town unless you're going to drive. And so for that reason, I want to thank you for opening the discussion on, you know, talking about extending the bike trail out there. I hope we have a good discussion about it, and I hope eventually that as we talk more about it, we'll see the need and the way to do it, and I'd like to encourage all of us to extend those bike trails if we could. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Philip Lockwood, and I live at 219 West Birchwood. I'm here to offer both support and encouragement as it relates to expanding what really is the next initiatives in mobility for Morton. And I say it that way because I serve as the Director of Programming for Distillery Labs, which is one of 15 Illinois Innovation Network hubs. And I am in charge of all of the smart mobility and smart city initiatives. And so looking at those, not only in urban centers, but also rural areas, and how trails, bike trails and bike paths are, become part of a network for transportation within towns, but connecting across towns. Cycling, during COVID, bicycle sales went up by almost 70%, and it still continues that way. It'd be hard pressed to buy a bicycle right now. The one you choose, you'd have a long waiting time. I come at this both as a entrepreneur, technologist, who looks at it from that point of view. But like Steve, I started running when I was in high school in Morton. On all those roads that are out there connecting the parks, I know what they look like from when snow was piled, I was this room in 1979, running out there on snow days. So, and so I'm also service as an advocate for promoting physical activity. And the best form of physical activity is walking, running, or cycling. And having those safe facilities that not only allow for that to happen, but the built environment is actually something that encourages use, so encourages people to become active. And so if you're looking forward to Morton 2020 and beyond, which, well, we just passed 2020, but 20 years from now, we need to think as you're providing this basic city services, that those basic city services reach out to include all forms of mobility. And there was mention about accessibility, and that includes making those bike paths available and able for those who are wheelchair mobile to use. And letting them connect, and so connecting parks, connecting essentially areas of population to schools and otherwise, which includes then the sidewalk network. And all of that is part of the pedestrian mobility network. And then you expand that with the bicycle, with trails, with now for both pedestrian use forms of mobility and bicycle forms of mobility. So like I said, I offer, and I've talked to Craig before the meeting too, I offer to help my support and expertise and advice in whatever form you'd like to use. And partial that is, is really on how that, and I understand the planning processes because I used to serve on the POAT's Technical Advisory Committee that looks at the long-term budgeting. And I was the person representing non-motorized transportation forms. So I understand how Tri-Kinney Regional Planning Commission, the Peoria MP can urbanize area transportation system and study all works. And so again, happy to work with you and staff to keep this moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Steve Soderstrom. I live at 45 Diamond Point right now. And when I was nine years old, I delivered newspapers in this town when the snow was this deep, so I know what you're talking about. I think it was seven or eight years ago, I took the Leadership Morton class through the chamber in this room, right here. And that was the first cohort of the class. And then at the end of the class, we weren't finished. They said, create a project and do it one year. And we said, no, we want to repeat it every year. And they said, other communities do things like they'll go clean a park, or they'll do it just one time one year and then they're done. We said, we want to repeat it and keep going. So we formed the Morton Trail Association. And nobody in our group of 20 people wanted to be the president of the Trails Association. And I had all these ideas, so by default, I became the president. Then the second year, nobody would step up, so I did it a second year. Then we passed it off to a couple of younger guys who one by one moved out of town. But I have all our maps and notes and everything on this thumb drive. So Jeff Boss and I believe Mayor Dersflinger, they were involved in the project of the whole community, and there's thousands of dollars of engineering on this map, and I think some of you have seen it. But all these trails, every time I hear someone say, we need a piece of trail here, or we need to connect to Northwoods Park, or we need to get out to here, it's all on this gigantic map. And I did print out an actual size copy once, and it's about this big. So I promise you, I'll bring one to the next meeting. It's all on there, we just got to figure out how to do it. We did call for some community meetings. We did a few of them, and we had about 30 people show up each time. So what we found out was about 95% of the people in the room just wanted to have much trail network everywhere because they're going to leave their house, and they're going to walk, or they're going to run, or they're going to bike. And they want to go all around town, and they loved having parks connected. We noticed the baseball fields, the trail stopped there. And Wendy Farrell did a great job connecting it to Thorn Ridge. And then all of a sudden, this big subdivision is connected and can go all the way into town. Kids can go to the schools, they can go to the parks, they can ride their bikes to the Pumpkin Festival. Kurt Karius in my neighborhood loved it because everybody could ride their bike to the Dairy Queen. Okay, but, and as far as getting out to Northwoods Park, here's something crazy. Under the highway, I-74 right there, Caterpillar had that extra bay. Big expensive concrete and I-beams, and it was supposed to connect the two parts of Caterpillar. Well, that's still there, so that's where the trail would go. During my short couple of years doing the Trail Association, Jefferson Street was getting torn up. We were able to get it restriped, and that was that part of the bike trail. It was the only option. The old railroad track was gone. But we got that done, and all of a sudden it connected some parts of town. So I'm all for the bike trails as much as possible. If everything on this map was connected and built, and the off-road parts and the on-road parts, we have more than 20 miles of bicycle and running and walking paths in the village of Morton. The only other little detail I would say, if you have a choice between asphalt and concrete, the runners and the walkers love the asphalt. Three seasons of the year, not today, because on a day like today, asphalt is as hard as concrete. But the rest of the year, they love the asphalt and it's soft. So I have, I have some resources here. I talked to Craig Loudermilk. I'm happy to share them. You need to see this map. It's amazing. All of those ideas and designs are already done, so it's just a matter of which part everybody wants to do first, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Why don't you go, I've seen your hand first.
Hi, I'm Kyle Musgrove. I live at 47 Hickory Ridge Drive, down the Hyde Park neighborhood. I wanted to say, I was spanned on Mr. Soderstrom's remarks on connecting Thorn Ridge, and that also connects the neighborhood with the lake. I'm not sure if that's what that one's called specifically. But then I wanted to bring up the issue with North Morton Avenue from Lakeland basically down to Letty Brown when it gets into the neighborhood of Hyde Park. So there's a shoulder on one side that may be about as wide as this podium. The other side of the street, the line to the, to, you know, grass is basically that. So if you're riding with traffic like you would cycling, you're going to be on, basically in, in the lane of traffic, which is the, is kind of nerve-wracking, especially if you're riding with kids, because you never know who's going to be barreling down that, that street. And it has those small hills which can limit visibility. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but I know a lot of the people in my neighborhood have expressed concern before and would love to have either a wider bike lane on the one side that has the room for it maybe. But that's one of the things that some of the, my neighbors had mentioned to me when I said I was coming today to the meeting to express that. So I just wanted to put that out there for North Morton Avenue, maybe a bike lane. But I also agree with the, having the Morton's initiative to increase our bike lanes, trails, bike paths. My family's been going to the Ulrich Park at the Trails of Timber Oaks a lot this year. We go after school some days, and the ability to bike there would just be pretty awesome. You'd pretty much have to be a very experienced rider and be okay with riding on, you know, narrow roads to get there. I wouldn't be willing to do that with my kids. But if there was a bike path dedicated to that, that would definitely be something worthwhile. And again, back to the North Morton Avenue, possible bike lane. The kids that live in Thorn Ridge and the neighborhood around the lake there may have the ability to bike to school versus bus travel if that was opened up and more protected for, for kids to use in the morning going to Letty Brown. I think. Oh, and I want to say just, you know, people, I know people outside of Morton come to Morton to use our bike paths and trails. They park at the one across from Kroger. I know they park other places and use our bike pass trails hangout. You know, that all brings revenue to Morton. You know, whether it's going to Dairy Queen, or going to one of the fast food restaurants, or whatever they're doing while they're here getting their gas. So having that, building it, bringing in people from neighboring towns, can only be a good thing for Morton in general. I believe that's all I have.
All right, thank you. You were next.
Well, my name's Tony Kapouska. I've lived in Morton since 2012. And I think seven out of those years, I was out in Thorn Ridge. I'm there right now, 534 Stoneway Drive. And it's great to take your children downtown on their bikes. The work that Steve and the Trail Association did is just awesome so that we can safely go downtown, go to Dairy Queen. It would be really nice if we could go to Northwoods Park safely. If you could go to Gold's Gym on a bicycle or run over there safely. And take that, kind of complete that loop, because part of it's done, you know, to Westwood Park, to Thorn Ridge, kind of round to downtown. I really need to complete that loop to Letty Brown and back around, you know, the other way, Northwood Park and up, up back into town. And I recognize there's some challenges, you know, just logistically, legally, I'm sure with, you know, you got the railroad crossing. You know, how do you pay for it? But depending on, you know, what you're talking about, there's, there are funding, different types of funding available for those things to address those challenges. But there's definitely, you know, safety. I'll just reiterate, keep it brief here, but there's, safety's the most important thing for, for our children, for ourselves. You know, there's the exercise, so it's the health, overall wellness and health of us in the community. There's just the community itself. You're connecting the community. It's a fact that I can ride or ride my bike or run to Peoria Heights on a trail system today, but I can't, you know, go to those other places that we, we just mentioned right here in Morton safely. So, and then, you know, last but not least, the commerce part of it. It benefits our, our community from an economic standpoint, so.
Thank you.
My name is George Brewer, and I'm a resident of Morton, Illinois. Have been since I married a hometown sweetheart. And for more than 25 years, I worked feverishly for the Rock Island Trail to be built. We were sued for libel and civil conspiracy, went to the appellate court, won both decisions, and finally got the trail done. Morton was along the way and several of the towns. But it took that long for people to recognize what a jewel we had by connecting with Peoria and persevering the attacks from people that were shortsighted and did not know what a wonderful trail it is. And when I heard about this about quarter to, no, 6:30 tonight, I was overjoyed with the thought that somebody came up with the same idea that my wife was bugging me to get involved again and try to get trails that would connect to the parks that we had. We did this a long time ago when Morton did not want to go along with the trail in the confines of the Morton Two Mile Section. But because they were persevered, we have the trail now. And I am hoping that it won't take another 25 years to make these connections that are vitally important to the families of all of us that live in Morton. And I encourage you to get other people involved, just as we had to do with a small group of people. We got it done, but it took forever. Thank you.
I'm Andy Souter. Been a resident of Morton since 2000. Live at 1240 Autumn Ridge Court. My wife and I are avid bicyclers. And we live, that's out in Fox Creek area. And at least in the summer or nice weather, two to three times a week, we have to drive through people's yards to get to the bike trail or take Veterans Road, which is two curves. And it's just, at certain times of day, there's just too much traffic there. It's just not safe. So we literally have gotten permission from those, the homeowners to bicycle. And so you see all our bike tracks through there. And it is, I've been to city, my son lives in Madison, and they have a tremendous network of bike trails. And it is a tremendous access to the, to their village or their city. And it really makes that city stand out. And especially through COVID, you know, the, we ride down to East Peoria probably once or twice a week. And we can attest that it has doubled, tripled, four times as many people on the bike trail. And it is, it is, I also do, I like to go up to Hyde Park. And there's certain times of day with, on North Morton Avenue with the shadows of the trees and stuff like that. I even have flashing lights on when I do that because there's not really space for biking. And I can tell you, I've been hit almost twice in that area. I mean, I rarely want to go when I, if there's going to be any traffic. And so I'm very excited to hear this, this program, and I think it would be a real asset to this village of Morton.
Thank you.
My name's Ed Reesberg. Recently just moved IP into Hyde Park within the last six months. And to just kind of bridge upon what a lot of you guys said, the opportunity, the idea to address this, I think is fantastic. Going on one thing, talking about the risk of north to get into Hyde Park, and encouraging activities, my son decided to bike with me. And out of maybe too much confidence, we went down into Waldheim to add some mileage. On our return trip, which is a quarter mile, not even, to come back up, a car pretty much clipped his bike down at the bottom of that little valley. From that point on, he's lost his desire to bike, lost his desire to run with me and just get outside, which is, was heartbreaking to me, to a point he was shaking. We had to pull him that first, like that first little cul-de-sac, and was too scared to really keep going. And upon, you know, you keep on going. That's one thing. So from the safety perspective, I strongly encourage it. The opportunity for people to walk, to use cycles, to access our parks and our schools, I think is a huge thing for us to address. And I think there's a lot of opportunity. We talked about the desire for Madison. Five, six years ago when I was out of a job, my wife and I looked at places to move to. The opportunity was Madison or Des Moines. Des Moines itself has had tremendous growth primarily due to 400 miles of interconnected trails as all of their towns work together to build these trail systems. So that opportunity, it brings a lot of money to communities, as we've all kind of said. So I think it's not just, it's obviously safety first and an opportunity to get our kids to school safely. It gets less cars off the roads. That at Morton Avenue in the mornings for kids getting to Letty Brown, there's a lot of, near it hits from cars for safety too, for me just to get out of our subdivision. And there's obviously a lot of other things, so I appreciate the opportunity that this is being addressed. I think there's plenty of opportunity to get to all of our parks and schools. And if there's already been other stuff, I know there's that committee, there's been a Bike Morton Committee that have tried to drive that along with, you know, the education that goes, that belongs with kids and other stuff. So that's pretty much, I'll end it at that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heidi Harder. I was born and raised here in Morton. I'm one of the neighbors representing the Trails at Timber Oaks off of Veterans. And I have five kids, and on our street alone, I counted just tonight, 60 kids on one street. In our whole neighborhood, there's probably, I think, 80, I think, or 90, Bryce lives across the street from me. So anyway, I have a son who's 15. He loves to bike and run, and I like to run too. And I do run on Veterans occasionally, and my son likes to. And you know, it's hard to tell you're a 15-year-old. They're pretty strong-headed. Don't run on Veterans. on Veterans, but we're just glad he's getting out of the house sometimes. So we don't like him to run on there. So it, it really limits him and other, if you have boys, you know, you want to get them outside and encourage them to exercise and just be active. And I think in this day and age with digital, with technology and everything, our kids need another outlet to be active. So I think with the new parking lot and the wildlife preserve, it would just bring a lot of recreation for options for kids and families. And this restrictions right now with COVID, it would just be really, I think, beneficial for everyone's emotional health and physical health and just great overall for our community. Just think it'd be a great idea. Thank you so much for opening up the discussion. Appreciate it. Thanks.
I also live at the Trails of Timber Oaks. And I was just going to say, there should be a bike trail or at least a widened shoulder on Veterans. It's a pretty sketchy road. I bike on it like every single day. It's, I almost die all the time. I have three kids, and there's a million kids in the neighborhood. Be sweet if they get into town without having to die. But that and Wolf Crossing is another neighborhood that needs connection, I think, as well as North Morton Avenue. But be sweet to have more bike trails in this town, so.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Kaluza, Morton resident. Lived here since I was in high school. My wife is a many generational Mortonite as well. Our kids go to the same schools we've gone to when we grew up and very much value this town. And thank you all for open forum and being able to voice concerns like Mr. Lehman's brought up with the, with the biking in Morton. It's definitely a passion of ours, as you can see. The bicycling community brings out a lot of passion in a lot of people. And I think from my perspective, I am, or at least had been before COVID, part of the Bike Morton Group through the Chamber and EDC. We have had some similar discussions that, that the planning maps have been, you know, created years ago. And I think we've kind of seen where that growth could be. It's just a matter of finding that momentum and finding the, the people that are willing to put the drive behind it and, and really say, hey, this is something that is important to our community and to our families and to each other. You know, I'm also an off-road biker. I like to use mountain bike trails for recreation. I love to get my kids out there to hike and to bike and enjoy nature. And like Bryce has said, you know, Ulrich is a new park. It's, it's a beautiful place to take your family, you know, to hike, to bike, to just go enjoy nature. And it's, it's very unfortunate that it's cut off. I leave my house, I live in Fieldstone, so I leave my house and pretty much ride Jefferson in the road, you know, to get to a section of bike trail. Ride the bike trail to, basically to the end of the bike trail on Veterans. And then, like Bryce said, you kind of jump off in the shoulder and hope for the best until you get to Ulrich. So I do that a couple nights a week. And I think a lot of us would really enjoy, you know, the expansion and the safety there, even if nothing else to feel more comfortable when you are out enjoying, you know, our, our town and what we've been able to provide. So thank you to all of you for the awesome place that we call home. You know, I, I love it here. I'm looking forward to being more involved in, in community service. And I, I think this is a good opportunity that, you know, we can all kind of band together as a group and say, hey, this is important to us and to our families in the future. And I'd like to see where it goes. So thanks again for the mention and the invite.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
My name's Dan Hartzler. I'm also a resident of Hyde Park, AD Hickory Ridge Court. The connection, what everybody else has said, North, North of Morton is, is awful. I've done over 2,000 miles of either running or cycling this year. Eighty percent of that is within Hyde Park for running because I'm, I'm scared to go on North Morton Avenue. Might run into Waldheim, but that's only the short quarter mile. And I have to watch it very closely and many times run in that ditch that's overgrown. And I know Craig will probably agree with me, the topography, North Morton Avenue is up and down and rolling. And there's a bridge there that they just redid, and I'm sure it's going to be very difficult to add a section of sidewalk there. But I'm all for any trails, additions to the community. I go up to Chicagoland Region Naperville all the time. And it's not, it doesn't have to be a paved road. They have crushed limestone everywhere for hundreds of miles. And it's a great, you know, it's great to use whether you're on a bicycle or running or walking or walking your dog. You know, it doesn't have to be huge investment at the beginning. We can start small and build from there. But thanks for everybody for, for coming. These couple of stories are amazing. I had no idea that there's a huge map and all the work that this gentleman has done is amazing. So thank you and appreciate the time.
Anyone else? I don't want to overlook anybody. Last but not least, why would I not know that?
You know, I can't start the new year without talking here. Leann Brown, I am with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development. And certainly this evening is full of joy and smiles for me, seeing a room full here, having discussions on quality of life is what we're all about through the EDC and the Chamber. And certainly our start of the Bike Morton Group a couple years ago. So everybody in this room and beyond are welcome to be a part of that. It's open discussions. As we heard today, it just validates all the layers of, of elements that go into this and all the important factors. The safety, the amenities, the attraction to our community, the quality of life, safety from pedestrians, safety from vehicle traffics, traffic. There's a lot of events and experiences that really build into this. Certainly it's something we want to grow upon. This is why we added the pumpkin pedal to our festival experience. This is why the Classic continues to grow and thrive, and we want more of that. That's why, you know, get behind the police department on their bike rodeo. There's a lot of untapped opportunities that I think spurring these conversations and bringing people and resources together, that's what it's all about. So thank you for all the great comments tonight. That's why we wanted to start the Bike Morton Group, to hear from those boots on the ground. Whether you are thinking about going out and buying a bike, you want to go out and run or walk, you need it as a mode of transportation, you want it as a mode, or just get out and enjoy our beautiful village that we have. So look forward to many more conversations. Feel free to, I'll stick around after the meeting. If you want my email, we'd be happy to add you to the Bike Morton Group and keep these conversations going. And thank you to our leadership for opening up these conversations and hearing from our citizens and businesses on this quality of life. So look forward to, to what this year will bring. I know, maybe one thing that wasn't mentioned, I know there's been a lot of concerns on Route 150, on the, the IDOT supposed repair of the road, which impacts the trail there. So as a lot of people mentioned, and I know I see it out my front door, the increased traffic on the bike trail from our community down into East Peoria certainly has tripled or more. And certainly a lot of safety concerns in that area. So Steve, I know you mentioned leadership Morton, so I'll touch on that. Registration is still open, so if you want a great experience, hopefully a great experience that Steve had. And Mike, we have another alum, registration's still open. That starts the end of January for an eight week session. And then save the date for Thursday, February 4th. We will have our virtual, still loaded with experiences and opportunities, shop and support Morton for our Chamber annual meetup. And that will be when our festival theme is released. So we'll end on that. So thanks again, everyone.
All right, we'll close the public comments. We don't respond to public comments, but our agenda is very short tonight, so the trustees will be discussing this. You're welcome to stay. We'll be there momentarily, believe it or not. There's only one or two short items on the agenda, so feel free if you want to leave. Feel so too. So the consent agenda tonight is the regular meeting, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, December 21st, 2020, and the special meeting, December 29th, 2020, and the approval of the bills. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
It's a second.
Any comments? Ask for a roll call.
Lunar.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight, village clerk.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Village administrator.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Chief of police.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Corporation counsel.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Director in Fire Emergencies isn't here. Director of Public Works.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Zoning and code enforcement officer.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
So we'll go to village trustees, and we might as well start with trustee Lehman.
Thank you very much, your honor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the time that you are allowing me to bring up the conversation topic, which is near and dear to not only me, but also so many within the village that I represent. It's hard to believe that the time has gone by so quickly, but coming on four years ago, I made a promise to do my best to represent our village by serving as a trustee. Within those four years, I've had countless conversations with many who live within our village and whom I feel blessed to have the opportunity to meet and discuss matters which were important to them and therefore important to me. One of the most commonly discussed areas of interest and concerns continues to be the future plans for sidewalks and paved recreational walking and running biking paths. Tonight, we heard from several great Mortonites who gave their time to express of how important this very topic is to them. I wanted first off, take a moment to thank every one of you who took the opportunity to come and also take the time to also speak. Obviously, it takes a little bit of courage there to be on, be on, behind a camera, but, and so I appreciate you guys making that, that effort. Your opinions matter and should be taken seriously and considered for the betterment of our community. My personal family and many I know find great enjoyment from spending time outdoors, whether it is from walking, running, riding bikes, hiking at our parks, et cetera. I know that we personally and many that I know would find greater use of Oakwood and Northwoods Park if there was a trail leading out to them. I also know that there are many who live closer to Ulrich Wildlife Preserve who would have greater use and desire if there was easier and safer way to get there. Growing up, I used to run quite often, being a part of the cross-country and track team, living in Autumn Ridge and Fox Creek over there. I was, I felt forced to run on Veterans Road quite often to get over to Thorn Ridge for my longer runs. I know that there'd be many who would echo, you know, my voice in saying how dangerous that was, running on that shoulder. I believe that if the bike path was extended along Veterans Road out to Ulrich Wildlife Preserve, safety would be greatly increased. I think of those who live in Wolf Crossing as well, and who would like to utilize the nearby parks, and who'd also like to have, to be able to, the ability to travel safely on Main Street into town by walking, running, and biking as well. And so my thoughts definitely go out to them. I, I just kind of, I was also just making some different notes. I was hearing about some of the, the businesses and such also, that we could also, you know, be of help to. Think of the thousands of people that, that use, you know, our gyms here in town, including Gold's, you know, on, you know, on Main Street there. I see people running and biking there to the gym often. It may have a little bit wider shoulder than Veterans Road, however, it's still not the safest place to go, especially nowadays with distracted drivers and so much more. I, I know that, that would be a huge thing. With an apartment complex that's being built out there as well, I know that that would be a huge benefit, as I'm sure there'll be young families that'll be living there in the near future. I'm in full support of creating plans for helping budget and plan for the infrastructure around these proposed bike paths. I would also ask for the trustees of this board to consider what type of impact these path extensions would have to our community. I would also like to read the comments of two people who share the love that we, that we all have for Morton. The first one is a previous mayor of ours, Norm Durflinger, who sent me his, his regards here this, this, this morning. Says, Clinton, I will not be able to attend the meeting, so I will give my views to you now. I know that they cannot be placed in the minutes unless I give a public comment. As the meeting is, I want the, the community to know the past history and my views. But of course, it's okay for me to read. When I was, when I was mayor of the, the board, when I was mayor of the board, I approved many bicycle routes on the planning map. Our bike paths supporters' intent at the time was to circle the community with bike paths and have every school, park, and church connected for easy and safe bicycle access. We were also hoping for some time in the future that we would have access to Bloomington Normal's Constitution Trail through Mackinaw and then to Peoria on the Rock Island Trail. It has been almost eight years since I was mayor, and I have not made one public comment on the board actions or other matters occurring in the community, so this will be my first. I completely support this planned bike plan for the safety of our children and our community members. In addition, I support it because we need to continually improve the standard of living in Morton. When 70,000 plus people leave our state in a year, we have to make sure that we have reasons for members of our community to stay and hopefully increase our population for move-ins. If you divide the cost of the village services over a decreasing population in Morton, each of us will pay more to keep our quality of life the same. Our property values most likely will be stagnant or decrease if we have an overabundance of vacant homes. For no reason, no other reason than one's pocketbook, this plan should go forward, even if some other planned projects have to be postponed. I'm sorry for such a long comment, but Morton is very close to my heart. And one other, of course, I'm going to pass this actually out, is a letter from, this is from Joel Dickerson. He's the executive director of the Morton Park District. He, of course, also sends his apologies. He had previous, had previous engagement. Of course, being that we're trying to connect these parks, it was a big deal to him, you know, that everyone came out here tonight. He wanted to give a special thank you to everyone for their, their time as well. He said, Village, Village of Morton Board of Trustees, we were happy to hear trustee Lehman's request to discuss the future accessibility for safe walking and biking routes throughout the community. The Park District agrees that accessibility to our community parks and facilities would be beneficial to our residents, and we will continue to cooperate with the Village of Morton staff in whatever capacity we can to help these plans come to fruition. Trustee Lehman specifically identified Northwood and Oakwoods Park, as well as the Ulrich Wildlife Preserve, as destinations that would benefit from dedicated walking, biking routes, and we agree. Director Dickerson has worked with Craig Lautermilk over the past couple of years to analyze future route needs and discussions to have, and discussions have been productive. There have also been focus groups conducted by Leann Brown with the Morton EDC and have involved stakeholders throughout the areas, as well as the MPD, the Village of Morton staff, and others. We believe that once funding sources have been identified, we can work with the Village of Morton staff to finalize plans. In the past, the Village of Morton has constructed some pathways along Veterans Road, and we have been able to reach a maintenance agreements whereby the Park District helps maintain these trails, as well as mow the green spaces that accompany them. We believe these types of agreements can be reached with future pathways as well, and we will be happy to figure it all out. We appreciate the trustees identifying this is an important topic of discussion, and we look forward to hope, to working with you to make it all happen. Sincerely, Joel. So I guess with that, of course, I appreciate everyone's patience there, getting through there, but I felt I had some, you know, much needed things to say. But I appreciate everyone coming out and hopefully open up to the board here if, to hear anyone else's opinions on future bike paths and sidewalk growth from Morton.
I'd just like to first welcome everybody here tonight. I didn't do that intentionally. And thank each of you for coming tonight and addressing your concerns and interests on the bike trails. So I just found out a few hours ago, we might have a crowd here. So I spent, did a little homework today and worked with the staff to find out what the village is doing right now, where we're going, and what we're going to do concerning bike trails. So first, there is official map of Morton with the trails and planning map. It looks a lot like this. This is a small version, has all color coding, color coded. It's a, it's a current planning. So on this map, you'll see three things. You'll see existing bike trails, you'll see future bike trails. Now, the future bike trails, that means there's already funding in place to put those bike trails and potential bike trails. So the future bike trails that are already here, it, it actually serves as a, a plan to the citizens, but a roadmap to the staff. So as we do construction in any of those areas where we got that funding, we demand that those be put in. One example of that is where the new car wash is on Cortland. There is a 10 foot bike trail on the Cortland side installed. And the city by ordinance pays for five feet, and the builder pays for five feet. So that is going in on that piece of property. So as development- So, as development goes in, those pieces go in. Also, in 2020, this year and next year, '21 and '22, we have the federal funding for Cortland extension. So, the bike trail that's in front of Farm and Fleet, Sam Lehman's, will be extended to North Main. That's going to happen. That starts this year. Also, the other bike trail is on the west side of Detroit Street where it ends. We have it on the overlay project, they're going to re-overlay Detroit Street, we've got the funding in place for that, federal funding. So, that bike trail is going to go all the way down to Birchwood, and we're going to have access across Birchwood. And part of that was done when we donated 72 acres, almost 73, to the Park District for the Wildlife Preserve. They donated three and a half acres, a very narrow strip of ground, that's three and a half acres that covers through all the farm ground, so we don't have to ask for right-of-way, and we agreed with the Park District, when we get that extension, the bike trail is going to go in. So, that's all going to happen in 2023, and it's all paid for, because we only pay a small portion of all that work, where federal funding pays for the rest. So, those two bike trails are going in. Then, when you get into the potential bike trails, that's where the planning map, and believe it or not, in the planning map, there's potential bike trails already shown that go to Northwoods, Oakwood, and Wolf Crossing, as well as all the way out to Trails of Timber Oaks. Timber, yeah. So, that's on the planning map. Now, the problem or the challenge might be, we have to decide how we're going to get it done. So, then it starts the planning, the engineering, the funding, the right-of-way to get that done. And so, that's where this entire board is responsible to come up with that, how we're going to pay for it, considering all the other services that have to be paid for out of the general fund, which is police, ambulance, and all that. So, we're going to have to direct those funds accordingly. So, this board will have to decide that. But, believe me, this plan's been, in fact, since Norm was mayor, and we've been working on this. Trustee Leach was involved in that back in those days, so we've been working on this, and it hasn't laid idle. We've tried to get it everywhere development has been. We've had a couple of turn-downs in the economy, you know, in recent years, but with the development, those pieces always get in, and Craig can assure you that I'm always challenging that the sidewalks and bike trails go in on each and every piece as we go. Because remember, the developer pays for half of that, the citizens pay for half. And I learned from Bob Ray years ago, get every piece in while you can. And I'm the trustee that 20 years ago, we had a lot of dead-end sidewalks, even on Main Street. I went around and filled them all in. Every one of them got to a corner of the street, because it was kind of, back in those days, you did one subdivision and then a different subdivision standard, and they didn't put them in, so we got all those dead ends connected. I can't tell you how many there was, but there was quite a few. So, fortunately, something else has developed. We got funding last year, and all the trustees got emails on this, even into October, where we got funding for a bicycle study. So, this Board of Trustees hired Hanson Professional Engineers Services to do that study. So, with this crowd coming, we made the phone call today, wanted to know where they were. I have to read this, what part of it was. They've looked into all the further information on the street classification, the roadway users, potential conflicts, right-of-way easements, estimated costs, and now they're anticipating, and this is them with no twisting of arms, they anticipating they're almost ready to have a public meeting by the end of January of this year.
Just for full disclosure, I work for Hanson.
Okay. Okay. So, I had Craig make that phone call to see where that was, so it's ironic that they could tell us that they really are looking to try, trying to make it by the end of this month. But they have all that homework that we paid them to do, to bring that information to this board, and they, you work for a very good company, they've helped us in a lot of issues through the town with traffic studies. I have high regard for Hanson, they've done excellent work for Morton. So, that is going to happen by the end of January, we're hoping, but they're going to dictate that. So, I just needed to bring the public up, the trustees up to date, and the citizens watching the cameras. So, this hasn't laid idle. You can go to the website, and when you go to the website on our planning map, you go to the Interactive GIS, and you poke up current planning, and you'll see this bike trail. So, it's been a lot of work, and back when Norm was mayor, we were all involved, and the bike trail going down past the post office is tremendous. I mean, that changed Morton, and we need more of those, but you get, there's a lot of work involved in that, but we haven't been laying idly still. So, with that, I will open it up to the board, for any other comments by the trustees, if anybody has any comments.
I'll make a quick comment. First of all, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate, you know, all the thoughts and insight. I guess I'd like to point out and follow kind of what Mayor Kaufman said, that this is something that we all want, and I don't want to speak for all the trustees, but I think we can all agree that adding bike trails in Morton, and more sidewalks in Morton, is something that we all want. I don't think there's a need to convince anybody here that more bike trails, more sidewalks are a good thing. Unfortunately, there's the issue of funding, is most of the time the issue, funding right-of-way. It's not, you know, we talked about North Morton Avenue, you know, there's a plethora of issues why there, you know, isn't a sidewalk there. There's my street, I live on Forestwood Street, I don't have a sidewalk on my street. I would love to have a sidewalk on my street, I have young kids, but right-of-way prevents that sidewalk from going in. And in order to get sidewalk down my street, you'd have to have agreement from every one of the people that live along that street to give up that right-of-way. Sometimes you might have to buy that right-of-way. In cases of businesses, you might have to buy that right-of-way at extremely high cost. You know, I know along Detroit Street, when they put the bike trail in there, at least one of the businesses, I know we paid a very large amount to have a bike trail, you know, to buy that right-of-way in front of that business. It becomes sometimes cost prohibitive to, the feasibility of spending that money to purchase right-of-way sometimes prevents putting in trails, putting in sidewalks where we would otherwise like to have them. And as Mayor Kaufman said, throughout the years, every chance we get, we're putting in more sidewalks, we're putting in more trails. Couple of years ago, we put in a piece of sidewalk on, along Birchwood there, I think it was a 200-foot stretch of sidewalk along Birchwood across from the Park District Office, Freedom Hall there, that didn't have sidewalk for years, since they redid Birchwood because they couldn't get right, we couldn't get right-of-way for that stretch of property. When we were able to obtain right-of-way, we put the sidewalk in. It's not an issue of, do we want sidewalks, do we want bike trails? Well, of course we do. We'd love to be able to take a bike trail all the way out Veterans, all the way out Main Street to Northwoods Park. I'd do it tomorrow if we had a pot of gold. But, we don't have a pot of gold, and we have a finite amount of money, and as Mayor Kaufman alluded, money for that type of stuff comes out of the general fund if we don't have some sort of grant or federal funding, state funding, and there are grants that we're looking at getting funding for, but it's a finite pot of money that all that has to come out of. And it's difficult to, you know, you know, say, well, one piece of sidewalk is more important than the other gentleman alluded, you know, that he lives in town, and, you know, before he wants to see trails out to, you know, Trails of Timber Oaks, well, maybe we can look at sidewalks on his street. Well, there's 100 streets in town that people would like to have sidewalks down. Some of them are feasible, some of them are not feasible, but it's something, and again, I don't want to speak for all the trustees, but it's something that we all want. That's a goal of all of us, is to have, you know, nice trails, nice sidewalks, to make Morton a better place to be. But it's something that we have to bite off little pieces at a time, and do little pieces at a time, because again, unlike the state, we try to live within our means and spend out of our little finite pot of money, and that finite pot of money doesn't really get bigger, it tends to get smaller. And I guess, I guess I want everybody in the public to understand that it's not, and I appreciate everybody coming and giving their thoughts and everything, and it's, I want the public to understand that it's not, you know, us against you, that we don't want trails, that, you know, you guys have to fight for the trails. It's, I don't believe that to be the case. I think we're all on the same team, and we all want, we all want the same thing, it's just a matter of how we get there and how we get the funding to get there.
Thank you. Any other trustees have any comments on this issue?
I just want to mention, thank you, Trustee Parrot, for that. That was very transparent and very to the point, and it's very true. And what Mayor Kaufman said, I just want you to take this with you, Mayor Kaufman said every time that there is infrastructure build-out, they're required to put the pass in. That's the easy part, and the person's required to pay for half of it. And in working with Officer Marks in zoning, zoning becomes quite an issue, and I've gotten involved with old infrastructure and the challenges that even Trustee Parrot mentioned. So, just want you to know that we want it, we really want it bad. I don't know of anybody on the board that doesn't want these trails badly, but it's, I think the most difficult part might be the financial part, but equal to the easement, the right to do it, or to convince people to let us go on through. You might have a mile of trails, and one person throws a hiccup in it, and sometimes you have to throw your hands up, so we are working on it though, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to address this from a little different point of view. I believe this is a responsibility of this trustee board to look into this and to consider all the improvements to our village. I spent about 58 years living out in that area on our farm, my whole life, and very interesting, what do we do when we wanted to ride our bike? We load them in our truck, we brought them into town, we rode in town, which is a little ironic, because now, we don't want to ride in town, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just saying how things, either you live in the country and you want to ride in town or whatever, but considerations such as these require extensive planning, and we all heard tonight that there's been a lot of planning going on, and fiscal responsibility, just like we've talked about. And I look forward to the ongoing discussions and hearing more from the, how the, all the governmental bodies included, including the township, because I believe going out to...
Yes, going out to Trails of Timber Oaks.
Trails Edge, leaves village, gets into the township, which adds another element to it, and again, a joint venture that can happen. And then from a mechanical standpoint, or a realistic standpoint, North Morton Avenue, very difficult, very difficult, the bridges and the gullies going through, the ditches going through there that has to be figured out. I agree with you, that would be awesome if we could ride that, and that could be worked into our, get that done, I think that'd be really nice. A little more width there, but again, I'm all in favor of it, and I think that we just keep working hard to get there, and how do you tackle a big job? And it's just keep working at it, and as opportunities come up to improve our infrastructure, we will. But, thanks for your interest, and we have a great village here, and just, this is neat to be able to come together and talk about this type of thing, but knowing that we're all working on it, headed in the right direction, same direction, so thanks.
I would agree with Trustee Mennel, I even put a little pressure on the board, if anybody can figure it out, it's this board, they're into the details, and this board is the board that helped the junior high put 186-car parking lot in the middle of Morton, with safe streets, bought six houses, knocked five of them down, got rid of a street to maintain at a starting cost of $400,000, and resurfaced in that same street in 12 years that only served us four houses. We got it done, that junior high, when it's done, is going to be unbelievable, a new gymnasium, a drop-off, one door open, safety, the school addressed all their issues. Craig Laudermilk took it upon himself to do all the inspections, it's going to be a job well-done, and saved the school district hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we can get this done, you're just gonna, we gotta constantly work at it on every project, and hopefully we get some luck along the way with a little more funding. So, I think that these, this group thinks outside the box on every single issue, so I do want to commend the trustees and the help on everything we're doing. So, with that, does any other trustees have anything to say?
I guess it's a quick question, Your Honor. I guess how, a lot of people out here, I think, would be, would, just a quick show of hands, who out here would be willing to help in some way to try to make this happen? So, a lot of people, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that raise their hands in the community, how could some members of the community help? How could they show support? How can they, you know, help try to make this happen? Obviously, we have more power in numbers, and I think there's a lot of great minds in this community.
Well, I think you need to get involved and start out at the end of the month, when we have the public, we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a public Zoom meeting, so that we get as many people and their comments on there. So, we're gonna get names, addresses, comments, we'll figure something out to get people involved, but I would encourage all of you to get involved in that Zoom meeting, because we figure there's going to be a lot of people, and with everything going on, we probably won't be able to have a public meeting unless that changes, so we're planning on this Zoom meeting, so I would start with that, and get everybody involved, because from there, I have not seen the report that's coming, so I may see it a couple of days before everybody sees it, maybe, maybe not, so I'm looking forward to it as much as any of you, and the trustees, I'm sure are, if we're going to get something done. So, I would start there, Trustee Lehman.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, does any other trustees have anything to talk about tonight? Okay, we do not need a closed session tonight, so if I could have a motion for adjournment?
No move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.